Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Briska. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saroski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yanis.
Here.
Mrs. Zarco.
Present.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item on our agenda is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. With spring just around the corner, we have a number of events to highlight that'll be coordinated by our DPW department. Many of you are familiar with these because you've participated with them in the past. And the very first one coming up on March 30th is our shred day. So you can bring your paperwork that you want to get rid of, that you've been compiling in boxes over the years. You can bring up to three banker-sized boxes to the DPW facility on March 30th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. and have your documents shredded. You can have it done right there. You can watch it happen so you're assured that any confidential material and so on is shredded appropriately. The event is for residents only. It's free to residents. So unfortunately, you do have to show an ID. And those who are not residents, we won't be able to accept their material. And also, another cleanup event, if you will, is the hazardous waste event, which is very popular, and that'll be held on Saturday, April 6. Again, that'll be at our DPW facility from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. So you can bring all of the hazardous household material that normally isn't collected at the curbside, and you can bring that to our DPW facility and drop off that material. Again, this particular event is for residents only also. And then the following Saturday, April 13th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. will be our electronic recycling day. So you can bring any electronic good that you have in your household to the DPW facility. Once again, TVs, radios, anything of the like, and have it appropriately recycled through this particular event. That's April 13th, again, at our DPW facility. And then throughout April, every Saturday, actually, April, starting on April 27th, May 4th, and then May 11th, so three Saturdays, we'll have cleanup events at DPW where you can basically drop off anything that you need to, stuff like furniture, lumber, tires, dirt, tree stumps, and the like, again, at our DPW facility, any of those three Saturdays. Again, that's April 27th, May 4th, and the 11th. So the idea with all of these events is to get all the properties cleaned up in the community and make sure neighborhoods are looking good and so on. And with that in mind, our curbside collection of yard waste commences the first week in April, so look forward to that. We're just a couple of weeks away, and you can start setting out your yard waste. And you can put that in 32-gallon cans or 64-gallon, 96-gallon carts, but those must have stickers on them, recycling stickers, so the refuse crews know that it's recycling. You can get the stickers at City Hall or DPW. And then continuing with a very popular program, on May 4th, we'll have our Pride and Shine Day, where we clean up, oh, well, it can be anywhere from 30 to 50 homes. We have about 100 volunteers, and we clean up homes where individuals just do not have the physical means, financial ability, and so on, to do what they need to do to get their homes ready for summer. And that includes raking leaves. It may include some painting, cleaning gutters, trimming shrubbery, and the like. So the Pride and Shine Day is May 4th, and anyone who would like to volunteer, please call 446-CITY. We can always use volunteers. So no doubt, the community will be looking good by the time spring gets here and throughout spring, and we'll continue to be able to keep our property values among the highest in the state. And Mayor, at the end of tonight's meeting, I'm requesting that the City Council convene a closed session pursuant to Section 8H of the Open Meetings Act to consult with the city attorney regarding two confidential written legal opinions. And that concludes my report this evening.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. Next item on our agenda tonight is an ordinance introduction. This is to consider introduction of an ordinance amending zoning ordinance number 278 to incorporate Article 12A, creating the Lakeside Overlay District. We have a presentation from our city planner, Chris McLeod. Mr. McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Vanderpool. As you note, Mr. Mayor, this is a potential introduction of an ordinance to amend our zoning ordinance to bring in this Lakeside Overlay District. This is just another step in the city proactively preparing for changes that are likely to come in Lakeside's future with the introduction, again, of this potential ordinance. The city, for a number of years now, has been working with mall ownership and to create a, basically, mechanism to provide for the economic challenges experienced by bricks-and-mortar stores that have happened over the course of time. Some of that, obviously, coming from the increase in competition from online retailers. The city has been engaged with C-3, which is the current mall ownership during the creation of this ordinance. And obviously, the city wants to be involved with this project moving forward from the standpoint that, obviously, Lakeside has always been a very large footprint within the city and will continue to be in the future. But obviously, as all things, it must evolve, and so must our zoning ordinance to help account for that. So we, again, we've worked with leadership for, of course, the last five years or so. This ordinance is designed to guide the future development of the mall. It encourages a variety of uses to promote economic vitality and sustainability. The mall, as we know it today, probably won't look the same in five to 10 to 20 years. It will have to continue to evolve as market trends continue to dictate. The ordinance itself encourages pedestrian orientation and mixed-use development. I think that's the key there. Right now, the way that the zoning ordinance reads for Lakeside Mall itself, it's a C-2 Planned Comparison Business District, which basically encourages us a standard mall, no mixture of uses, just retail, retail, retail. I think all of us can agree that Lakeside, in some form or fashion, must expand its footprint, must take a look at what the uses are there, and would most likely, in the future, see a wider variety of uses, including office, medical use, residential, entertainment-type uses as well. This ordinance promotes a higher intensity or density on the site itself, as we can all see based on aerial photos, which we'll lift you right here. There's a lot of unused property at Lakeside. At one point, the amount of retail and the amount of parking that was at the retail facility was seen as a good thing. It was seen as an ability to provide for the users of the mall. Now, it's kind of seen as an impediment almost. So that space needs to be utilized. The impacted properties for this particular ordinance are within Lakeside Circle itself. It does not go outside of that circle. It does not go along the properties along Hall or Shaner, simply the mall itself and its anchors, and the one subsidiary on the inside of the ring as well. But again, just inside of the ring itself. So take one step back. So in terms of key points of this ordinance, the ordinance itself does not impact the current operation of the mall. The mall can continue to operate as it does today and move forward in terms of the uses that are there now. The ordinance does apply to any new buildings or building additions, as well as any new uses which aren't currently allowed for in the C-2 district. So if anyone in the future, or C-3 itself, wanted to utilize either a different type of use, they wanted to introduce residential or multiple-family, or a use that wasn't foreseen, or expand that footprint, then they would go automatically into our planning and development process. So we'd utilize our current PUD ordinance. It would go through, and we'll go through that process in just one second, but it would create a working relationship between us and the ownership of the mall to create an overall master plan for the development, particular to what the ownership was looking to do. And again, the property that it applies to is only within Lakeside Circle. And I can't stress this enough, is that this ordinance is designed to create ultimate flexibility. Because just as retail has changed in the last five years, everyone, I think, anticipates that retail will continue to change over the next five to 10 to 20 years, as I've talked about. So we don't really know what the future holds. So we need to create an ordinance that's flexible enough to change as time goes on. So what would the process look like? So if the ownership comes in and says, "We would like to expand the mall, demo part of the mall, change a new use to the mall," whatever the case is, that isn't foreseen under the current ordinance requirements, then at that point, they go through our PUD. You've seen a number of these come through in the past. It goes through the same process. The Planning Commission would provide their recommendation to you once they hold a public hearing. We would draft a PUD agreement between Planning Commission and City Council between that timeframe. City Council would then have your own public hearing at the time where you would ultimately make the decision of whether the PUD is approved or not. If the council does approve it, then the PUD agreement's signed, and then the process then moves forward administratively. So then any site plans or any additional building permits, any additional use permits, would then, no, we don't administrate administratively. So the idea is to create that flexibility, but also create a system that moves relatively quickly and is relatively responsive to the changing environment of retail. So again, we've talked about the impacted properties here. So here's some of the representative examples. We've talked about the implementation of some housing. Again, these are all just representative images, nothing dictated in terms of these images. Here's some potential medical users that we could potentially have. I mean, the possibilities are endless. There's so much square footage. There's so much acreage out there, so much unused property out there. There's a multitude of things that could be added. And again, this is just something that could potentially ultimately be where Lakeside is now, and this representation keeps Lakeside for the most part, but provides some potential new uses. I mean, again, the possibilities are endless. This ordinance is designed to allow for all that to occur. So with that, I'll be more than glad to answer any questions that City Council has. I did want to say that Planning Commission did hold their public hearing this past Thursday and did recommend unanimously to the City Council approval of the PUD ordinance, or Lakeside Overlay Ordinance.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. McLeod. Open it up to anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item. Mr. Weller, I see you're here from JLL. Would you like the opportunity to speak or just answer questions, if we have any?
I'd like to answer questions, but Chris Campbell can answer them.
Sounds good. Anyone in the audience, Mrs. Gottfried.
I have requested of one of the council members to...
Do you mind bringing the microphone over just a little bit, Mrs. Gottfried? Thank you.
Is that good?
Yeah, perfect.
Okay. I had requested of one of the council members to remove two of the items from the consent agenda because one of them directly relates to this particular item. That would be Item J on the consent agenda. Within the Item J on the consent agenda, it states to adopt a resolution authorizing city administration to proceed with the implementation of recommendations necessary to achieve redevelopment-ready community certification from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, or the MEDC. Within Item J, it addresses zoning 278. So my question to you would be, why wasn't this included? Why wasn't it removed from the consent agenda? And the biggest question is that it alluded to appropriate fees. There is no table on the cost to we the taxpayers, if it will be on a yearly basis, if it will be contingent upon approval by the council at a future date on a specific project. And I would like to know what the appropriate fees are in regard to this. And that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gottfried. Anyone else? Mr. Marshall.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vanderpool. I just want to ask one question regarding this deal, this zoning ordinance, or anything else dealing with Lakeside. And I'm going to probably start doing this on everything that we do. I want to know what it's going to cost the city, if anything, and what's going to be the benefit to the city, if anything. If it's coming out of our tax dollars, don't even dream of coming up with any more requests for tax money. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Anyone else on this item? If not, Council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to introduce the ordinance amending zoning ordinance number 278 to incorporate Article 12A, creating the Lakeside Overlay District. Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
I just have a couple of comments, and I don't really have any questions tonight, but I do know that we've been working on this for some time, so it's not new information for any of us. I think it's a step in the right direction. It's only one step, and there's going to be many that are going to follow, but we have to start somewhere, and I think this is where we have to start. So I'm comfortable with the information that we've been given, and I have no questions.
Mrs. Schmidt, anything?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Just a couple of comments and just a couple of questions. Recently, I was in Ohio and was staying at a hotel that happened to be in the parking lot of a mall quite like Lakeside. The difference is, they probably had four stores open in that mall, and it was really sad to see, and it was really rundown. And I was at Lakeside about a month ago shopping for prom dresses, and what a change that has occurred there. And I think we need to be proactive. I think, you know, my way of shopping is obviously not the common way to shop anymore, and I think it's really sad, but it's the reality of how these brick-and-mortar stores are going away. So I think us being proactive and looking at different ways to utilize that property in the future is responsible of us to do. That being said, Mr. Weller, I can't have you sitting here and just ask you a couple of questions. So you are with C-3, who are the current owners of Lakeside, correct?
I'm with Jones, Lane, and LaSalle. We manage for the current owner.
Okay. So in this whole process that we've been speaking about, how involved have you folks been with the process?
We've been involved in all phases of the process. We've had several meetings with the city manager and members of staff, and we've also been involved with stakeholders' meetings. So we feel like we've had a lot of input into what's going on.
And are you in support of what we're starting to do tonight?
Yes, ma'am, we are.
Okay. So we're not forcing this upon you folks. We are...
No, this will allow us, it'll benefit the property by allowing for, as it said in the presentation, but it really is true, the markets change, the marketing conditions are changing and allow us to bring uses that are consistent with those changing conditions.
Okay. Thank you. I have nothing further.
Thanks.
That's all I have, Mayor Taylor.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Anyone else, Council?
Mayor?
Mr. Radke.
To the Chair, to Mr. McLeod, I have a few brief questions about this PUD. I'm curious, why are we limiting the PUD just to the interior of Lakeside Circle rather than expanding to, say, the Petco or the Toys R' Us site also as part of the project?
Mr. McLeod.
I think the idea was is that the immediate need is for that area within Lakeside Circle. There's nothing saying that ultimately the city couldn't further an ordinance and different amendments that would then impact the surrounding area. But I think, you know, the opportunity is there for Lakeside Mall as a whole. There's a lot of undevelopable property or underutilized property there, I would say. So I think, you know, this is the low-hanging fruit, so to speak, and I think the idea is that we try to jumpstart and reinvigorate the mall by providing potential additional uses there. And then, as time goes on, I think, to your point, you know, the city very well may look at what goes on in the outskirts of that to potentially do some amendments there. Maybe not as, in the same fashion that we're doing here, but to allow for a multitude of uses and some different configurations.
It just seems to me that we have a lot of commercial and office space that kind of borders that Ring Road on Lakeside. I'm thinking about the former Zobuelos, or whatever the restaurant was there, the Toys R' Us, which is now vacant, and several other properties that seemingly should already be in this proposal, just because from trying to make those properties more development-ready, I think being part of the PUD rather than not would afford it. They always can be developed outside of the PUD, too, correct?
Mr. McLeod.
Absolutely, that's the case. And keep it in mind that those properties are a little different in terms of, obviously, their configuration. You know, the Lakeside Mall property, proper, is very large. There are some breaks in it, but pretty much a all-inclusive 100-acre property, so to speak. The properties around the circle itself are pretty chopped up, are pretty independent of one another. But to answer your question directly is that those properties could absolutely redevelop. They could go into our PUD ordinance as it stands now. I mean, there's nothing limiting them to say, "I want to do a mixed use at the former Toys R' Us site." Our ordinance would allow for that under the current PUD. Again, this one is just a piece that, for Lakeside Mall itself...
The mall proper.
The mall property, and proper, and it directs them straight to the PUD ordinance. Right now, those outer properties could develop either under their current zoning designation or come in under a PUD if they so chose.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McLeod. All I have, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
To the Chair, to Mr. Vanderpool, would you address Ms. Gottfried's question in regard to Item J of the consent agenda, as to if it applies to this ordinance introduction?
Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. The Item J on the consent agenda is a resolution that the City Council be considering to apply for redevelopment-ready certification through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And essentially, that's an effort to codify, in large part, a number of our existing practices. So it's really no different than an accreditation process that a college may go through or a hospital may go through and the like. So it sets forth best-practice guidelines that, again, we're going to be codifying. So indirectly, it relates to the Lakeside project in some ways, but not directly. I don't know if that answers your question, but the consent item agenda is a very macro umbrella-type process we're going through, and this is a somewhat specific process related to a very specific parcel of property.
Thank you.
Council, anyone else? Well, I just will add that this is a, really, the next step in what we hope to be a transformational project over at Lakeside Mall. I'd encourage people to continue going out to Lakeside Mall. I've been there, and while shopping habits are changing, the mall is continuing, and there are many stores in there that report that their sales are doing well, right? And they're open for business. The restaurants there are doing well. We're developing, I shouldn't say we are, there are restaurants in development on the outer ring, and things continue to be going well there. But we are seeing a trend, obviously. So this is a proactive measure to create something that we hope will benefit the residents of Sterling Heights, the businesses in and around Lakeside, the Lakeside Mall partners, the owners of the mall, the department stores there, and to set this up for a, you know, for the next 30, 40, 50 years, to make it a viable shopping alternative. So I'm excited about this and ready to see what the next steps are going to be. So thank you, Mr. Weller, JLL, and C-3 for your partnership in this. We couldn't really be here without, you know, the guidance of what you guys want, because we have to make it clear, this is a private company that owns this business, that owns the mall. They're going to market it for sale. They're going to hopefully sell it to a developer who shares some of the ideas that we have, but ultimately, it's going to be up to the market to determine what's going to happen there. But with the traffic counts we have on M-59, the number of households we have in this area, the disposable incomes, et cetera, I'm excited, and I think there's a real opportunity for us to do something here that hasn't been done in Macomb County ever before. So I wholeheartedly support this. So without any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Weller and Mr. McLeod. Next item is an ordinance adoption, and this is to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 11 of the city code to adopt the 2015 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code with local amendments and to enact new regulations governing vacant buildings. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Ms. Gottfried.
Good evening again. After having read through a rather lengthy explanation of just what this ordinance adoption is all about, it brought about a number of questions that have been addressed at the Planning Commission and also prior council meetings. What I would like to know is multifamily resident living. We have a number of homes in this city that are being occupied by a large number of family members, and where they've converted their garages into home space, such as kitchens and bedrooms and so on and so forth. We do have an ordinance on the books, if I remember correctly, that states that we do not allow that. And I'm wondering if indeed, after having this council address this at the last meeting, if indeed, we are going to uphold our ordinances in regard to that. And that includes any apartment dwellings, any condo units, any government-subsidized facilities, so on and so forth. Also, there was a section about weeds. We have one of the most precious resources in this city, and that's the Clinton River. And when I read through the Noxious Weed Ordinance, of which has been around way back since Mrs. Butella, for you that remember Mrs. Butella, she was on the Noxious Weed Committee, and she was very good at her job. She was a spitfire, and she's very well missed. But my point in this is that there are a number of properties that front the Clinton River, and a number of properties, and as Mr. Yanis had stated at the last council meeting, we have a natural drainage system within our soil, prior to it reaching the body of water, traversing to the rivers and out into the lake. A number of these properties do have weeds, and a number of these residents, of the residents, especially that front the Clinton River, do not utilize fertilizer or weed killer on their lawns for that express purpose of the chemicals, fertilizers, anything soaking into the ground and then... and then traversing into the waterway. So hopefully, there can be some exceptions made. I notice when I come down Utica Road, Shaner, a number of other bodies of water in this community, that we do have an issue with weeds, dandelions, thistle, so on and so forth. So maybe you could address that and come up with an alternative. Also, I was a little dismayed and not aware that this may have been on the books prior, but that is a warrant search of your home, the inside contents. And it's warranted, according to your backup material, that says that if the outside appearance shows some indication of an issue that may have permeated the inside of your home dwelling, that the city's building department has the right to come into your home. They can knock on your door, you can say, "No, I am not going to allow you in," and then therefore, they go for a warrant to enter your home. I find that just so intrusive and so big brother unless, unless with a condition that it is imperative based on an issue of rats and infestation, so on and so forth, that has permeated the outside that appears an inside problem occurs.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Godfrey. Anyone else on this item? Not counsel, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 11 of the City Code to adopt the 2015 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code with local amendments and to enact new regulations governing vacant buildings. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
I think this has been explained to us. I have no other questions. Oh, I'm good.
Counsel, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke.
I have some questions for Mr. Castor. To the chair. I recently reviewed this. I missed the last meeting because I had to work, so I'm a little bit late to the party, and I watched the meeting also, listened to the comments. Under Section 11, 1, 2, 3, maintenance and security requirements for possible vacant structures in the city, there's a Section 4, which says that owners shall inspect or cause the inspection of vacant property and buildings to ensure compliance with this section, and it says that they have to perform these inspections on a weekly basis. If they live more than 30 miles away from our city, they have to hire a property company to inspect it. I'm just curious, what would the annual fee for, or even the monthly fee for a property company to inspect a building in our city, what do we expect that cost to be to our property owners?
Mr. Castor.
Are we talking a fee that we would charge them, or is this the fee that they would hire?
Because we're going to require them to hire a company to inspect their building. What would that, what do we suspect that would cost our property owners?
In certain cases, they may have somebody already representing the property that may be able to provide this service already currently for them. It could be a listing agent that would be able to do some of these inspections and keep an eye on this property on a routine basis. So maybe a fee that they already have within their means of taking care of it.
And I guess how hardcore would we enforce this? I assume that we just want to make sure that the buildings are secured, there are no broken windows or entryways for vagrants or pests to get into the building. But I'm just afraid that we're going to, I guess, add a very onerous requirement to property owners to inspect their buildings. I don't, I want to kind of balance that. I don't want terrible buildings in our city, but I also don't want to, you know, possibly put thousands of dollars in inspection fees on top of, you know, property that already is not being used. I assume most property owners want their buildings to be in use rather than vacant.
Yes, I'm sure what the question was.
Sure. I guess I'm just curious, how are we going to enforce this ordinance? Are we going to have them send us an inspection schedule to make sure the building is being inspected? Or are we just going to hold this in case a building isn't being inspected and then apply it to the vacant property?
So I believe it is within the ordinance that if there is an issue...
Right.
They are to let us know. If there is not an issue, they don't need to notify us, but we expect them that they're going to be out there routinely doing this inspection, and when they notify us, it's, we had an issue with a window, or we had an issue with a pipe, we've addressed it, we're letting you know.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Castor. All I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else, counsel? If not, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is the Consent Agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's Consent Agenda? Ms. Godfrey.
Item J on the Consent Agenda. I do appreciate your limited response, Mr. Vanderpoel, and possibly you forgot to tell us how much it was going to cost us and how it was going to transpire. And it was not in the backup information, and I thank Mrs. Kosky for asking the question that she did, but this does directly affect Item A. So if you could possibly ask under Old Business or have Mr. Vanderpoel answer the question after, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Godfrey. Anyone else on the Consent Agenda? Mr. Marshalones?
Again, Harry Marshalones. I haven't, I don't want to complain about anything, but I'd like a clarification because I don't understand why we're going to purchase a Ford Transit van and a Ford pickup for the police department. Now, I am a big supporter of the police and fire department, believe me, but I know how many areas there are in the city. I know how police officers are dispatched to areas for their tour of duty. I know how many traffic cars are out there, and I know Sterling Heights has the best-mounted group of police officers, actually better than Pony Express head riders. I'm just kind of interested in why the police department needs trucks now. Are we going to be carrying stuff around, or couldn't those, couldn't they just make a call and get something from the DPW? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Marshalones. Anyone else on the Consent Agenda? Vans for animal control and the trucks for canines. Anyone else? If not, counsel, we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda. We will move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Mr. Marshalones? Did you hear what I said, by the way?
Huh?
The van is for animal control and the truck is for the canine unit.
Oh, animal control?
Yeah.
Cool. Get one with air conditioning, the summers are hell on these animals. One thing I did want to bring up is the deal that's going on at Lakeside and any other planned construction in the city. I understand there's some construction going on for some apartments over some stores and stuff like that. I haven't gotten into it that deeply. But I'm working right now with people at the county DPW because we've got a big problem with Anchor Bay continually going rabid from all the algae. And one of the, and I've got a big map that I'm going to be going down there with that shows the rivers and how they come from the north and the west and all the water that travels. And everybody that ever gets a vote in the state of Michigan wants to plant trees behind their house, so I guess that's going to become a deal. And of course, those trees, when they start dropping their leaves and nobody rakes them up, it's going to be like the ground is at Dodge Park. If you walk around the paths in Dodge Park, they're beautiful. You can ride a bicycle, rollerblade, walk, skip, hop, do whatever you want. But if you look off into the forested area, it's nothing but swamp. Leaves kill the grass if you don't pick them up. If you don't pick them up and there's no grass, then we wind up with erosion on that drain because the grass is gone. So there's a lot of problems. We need, if we're going to do anything out of Lakeside, what are they going to do with their wastewater? What are they going to do with their rainwater and stuff like that? As long as something's being done, why not consider doing it properly? The county is doing a lot of different stuff to try to get the chemicals and the sediment out of the soil. At the same rate, the cities are trying to build more and more buildings, which create more and more problems for the sewage system in order to raise tax revenues. So basically, you guys maybe by uniform and start a war or something between you because one's fighting the other all the time. I'd love to see the county and the cities working closer together. And I also am kind of concerned about the building of this multi-story apartment with the stores because I've heard from a number of sources that there's a lot of missing paperwork that were not received by the Planning Commission. There's also documents that were improperly or incorrectly dated. So we need to, we need to take a look on that before anybody starts saying, "I do," you know. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Marshalones. Anyone else? Mr. Jefferson.
Charles Jefferson, Sterling Heights. First things first, this is my yearly plea, yearly going deaf ears, but it's timely. We do need to start getting the metal detectors down in these here buildings. People are drinking too many Red Bulls, not getting enough sleep, they're a little touched in the head or whatever. We need to start protecting ourselves. The next question is for Councilman Radke. Since you're our police guy, what is the plan on getting us the green light type system they have down in the Detroit Warren area for our area here in Sterling Heights? To go with our gas stations and our party stores and whoever else might feel that they may need a green light system or direct line to the police station, to the police. Next, Mr. Vanderpoel. What is the, how does the city go about fixing the parking lots? Because some of these parking lots are terrible. Egresses, egresses, they're tore up. Do they go by the code enforcement? How long do they have to take to get the, those parking lot situations up to date? Because it's not only the roads, it's the parking lots as well. The final thing is, Mayor Taylor, have you decided to join Mayor Duggan in his lawsuit against the state to lower our car insurance rate? If you haven't, why not? Because that, along with the road issue, people getting teared up, that is a big issue here in Sterling Heights and the state of Michigan to lower car insurance in some form or some way. Rashida Tlaib came out today, and I don't know if people like her or not like her, you have your way, but she came out and she's trying to get past that you don't have to have your credit score tied to your insurance. I never understood that, nobody ever understood that, why that was coming about. So could you tell us what you're doing about, for the residents here in Sterling Heights on their car insurance? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Anyone else under communications from citizens? If not, I'll close that portion, go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpoel, anything tonight?
Mayor, just quickly, I can follow up to a couple of questions first. Again, regarding the redevelopment-ready communities, there's not a direct fee to apply, so to speak. There is a cost, obviously, for the city to go through the accreditation process by way of administrative oversight. For example, we have to review existing ordinances, existing practices. In some cases, we may have to update some of that material. So there's indirect costs in that respect. However, this will pay dividends in many ways, especially for a business community, as they will become eligible for greater incentives at the state level once the city becomes fully certified as a redevelopment-ready community. So it does have significant dividends for the development community in addition to the city itself. There were a couple other questions. I wanted to comment on storm water detention because the city does have a very rigorous storm water detention ordinance that we use with any development, similar to our tree preservation ordinance and our landscaping ordinance. Whenever a property is developed, developers must contain storm water in a variety of means. It could be a detention pond, it could be a detention basin, it could be underground storage, and it can only be released into the system in the same manner that the site would have naturally drained, so we're not overburdening the watersheds and creeks and rivers and so on that ultimately go out to the Great Lakes. With respect to Lakeside, if you could imagine Lakeside Lake in and of itself, which is a significant retention pond of that entire area, which is almost, you saw from the pictures, 70% parking lot right now, so any redevelopment that might occur out at Lakeside would probably be less onerous in terms of storm water detention than is currently the system. But on any given development, they must meet our rigorous storm water detention systems ordinance, which is also in compliance with the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, MDEQ, and also the state, the county's Public Works Office as it relates to the Drain Office. I wanted to, perhaps Councilmember Radke will comment on it, but the green light system that the city of Detroit has developed, there's mixed reviews on its effectiveness right now. In the case of Sterling Heights, it is an expensive program to roll out to businesses. Fortunately, we work hand-in-hand with our businesses. Through our community-oriented policing program, we have great relationships with them. Our business community is manageable in such a way that when they have a concern, we proactively work with them to address any of those concerns. So our safe-city status hasn't really been compromised by not having a green light program, but that's not to say it's something that we're not looking at and may in the future recommend to the City Council. And Mayor, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel, Mr. Kaczyuski.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have two items for tonight.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. I'll open it up to any reports or new business.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke.
I have a couple things, so we'll kind of go through them. I recently met with Mr. Vanderpoel about, hopefully, a plan to add more public art to our city, including for our high schools to be able to design the crosswalk outside of their building, and maybe school colors or some kind of design, working with their arts department. I think it'd be a nice way to show school pride, especially because we were just talking about redesigning those crossings to make them safer. So if we add this in, we're kind of doing two things at once. So I'd ask that we kind of move forward to the city, have the Arts Commission, everyone else think about this, so that we can hopefully add school pride while also upgrading those crossings to keep kids safe. Secondly, I wanted to put this, ask the city to prepare a budget amendment for trees. You know, we talk a lot up here about reforestation and moving Sterling Heights forward, but I think that the best way to do this is to spend a little bit of money out of our pocket to hopefully start to add more trees to our subdivisions. So I'm proposing a $100,000 budget amendment for five years, $100,000 a year for five years, to buy trees and start in subdivisions that were hit the hardest by Emerald Ashbore and Dutch Elm disease, to add more street trees to hopefully improve our property values. I know one thing I receive, and I'm sure the rest of my councilmembers do too, is whenever a construction project goes in, people lament the loss of trees. So if we can do a little bit from the city to add to those trees, I think that that would be just wonderful, and I think a lot of the people in the city would support that. would be just wonderful, and I think a lot of the people in the city would support that. And the other thing I wanted to talk about today was, I had the pleasure of speaking with the Police Officers Association of Sterling Heights just recently, and I wanted to bring to attention of the council, I think a lot of us have heard about it, the janitorial issues over in the PD. I saw a picture of a water bottle station that was a full container and a full container next to it, and a full container next to it. So I guess through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool, what are we doing to kind of remedy the sanitation or the janitorial problems over at the police department?
Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Radke, it's a very good question. First of all, we have allocated additional cleaning services to the Police Department Court Building Library and to City Hall for that matter. We're also in the process of developing a request for a proposal whereby we're developing a far more rigorous checklist requirement of weekly inspections that not only the janitorial service company will have to sign off on, but also the individual departmental liaisons that are responsible for overseeing the work. In the case of the police department, we've got to make sure that we have good oversight of the contractor as well. In some cases, that hasn't been as desirable as we'd like. So we're kind of attacking this from a couple of different fronts, if you will. So I expect that, well, I know already we've seen a significant improvement in the police station. I've personally gone through it to inspect it, and we'll continue to make sure that we get improvement in that area. Thank you.
I also wanted to add, and thank you, Mr. Vanderpool, for answering that question, that we received a report this week at city council that over this winter season, we've issued 475 snow enforcement tickets, which were actual fines imposed for not shoveling your sidewalk. Because I know that whenever I get contacted about this, people say, "I'm the only person who's ever received an enforcement ticket for not shoveling my sidewalk." We're trying to enforce it citywide, and I'm sorry if you receive one, but the rules are very clear. Please shovel your sidewalk and be a good neighbor to all your neighbors. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else, Council? Mrs. Kosky.
Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool. Last week, I had a resident approach me and request if council would take another look at the fire pits ordinance. With summer coming on, he has some concerns as to the smoke that they produce, and if we would take a look at the ordinance to see if there's anything that we might be able to critique on that.
All right. Anything else?
Set.
Okay, Council, anyone else? No? All right. Just in brief response to Mr. Jefferson's comment regarding the lawsuit, I haven't looked into joining. I don't know that he's looking for other city mayors to join him in that lawsuit. We can reach out and see if there's any support. I personally support it. I think that it's outrageous what's going on with Michigan's insurance rates. We have the highest insurance rates in the nation by a large margin, particularly impacting the people in southeast Michigan and the city of Detroit. It's immoral, in my opinion, what's going on there. You have people that are, they simply cannot afford the insurance, so they're getting, you know, they're registering, they're getting seven-day insurance, registering their car and then dropping their insurance. And so somehow, this has to be reformed. The main, one of the big issues with the insurance reform is this Michigan catastrophic claims fund, which Senator Lucido is looking to use to fix the roads. Well, he can't use that money, and the state can't use that money to fix the roads unless there's significant insurance reforms that happen. We're enforced in Michigan to purchase unlimited lifetime medical coverage for catastrophic injuries that might happen as a result of an auto accident. We're the only state in the country that requires that. The next highest country, or next highest state, I believe, is New Jersey, which requires you to purchase at least $250,000 in lifetime benefits. And when I say unlimited lifetime benefits, some of these people are collecting millions, if not tens of millions of dollars, in medical benefits that we're paying for through our insurance. So is it a good benefit for the people who've suffered a catastrophic injury? Of course it is. Of course it is. Would it be beneficial for me to purchase millions of dollars of disability coverage? No, because it's very unlikely that I'll need millions of dollars of disability coverage. And none of us would go out and do that if given the choice. So what Mayor Duggan is saying, and which I agree with, is, yeah, this is a great benefit for the very small number of people who do end up needing it, but the rest of us are subsidizing that, and we can't afford it anymore. You're paying, you're putting it on the backs of people who can't afford it. So as our roads crumble, we're paying incredibly high insurance rates, and the people that are benefiting are trial attorneys, the medical industry, and the insurance companies. The insurance, the medical, the hospitals will charge sometimes four to five times for the same procedure when no-fault benefits are being used to pay for that medical procedure than if you have private pay health insurance. How is that moral? It's not. You don't go to the store, we don't charge you at Kroger a different price based on what type of income you have or what type of ability you have to pay. So why are we doing that? Why does the state allow the hospitals to charge $1,500 for a procedure to the no-fault insurance companies when, to the automobile insurance companies when they're paying that your health insurance would only pay $200 or $300 for? So I fully support him, Mr. Jefferson. I'll do whatever I can to support him. I've talked to all of our state legislators, and I'm going to call out my former colleague and friend Nate Shannon, because he's dead wrong on this. And he needs to hear from the residents who are paying exorbitant auto insurance rates and needs to know that we can't have this anymore. We need to reform this. So I'll talk to Mr. Koszubski. If there's anything we can do to support his lawsuit, I will. And I am supporting him and doing what I can to influence the state legislators to take this on, but it's a big task. You're going up against some very well-funded influential lobbyists, which frankly are winning on this while the rest of the residents suffer. So the citizens of Michigan need better representation on this issue. That's all I've got. Good ideas, Mike. I think, I like that idea with the school crosswalks. I'd like to see where that goes in the trees. Obviously, we need to do more on. So without any other comments, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session.
Support.
I need a motion.
I mean, I'm sorry, so moved. Support.
Been moved and supported. Ms. Riska, can we please have a roll call vote?
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Riannas?
Yes.
Ms. Serko?
Yes.
Ms. Kosky?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Sarowski?
Yes.
Motion passes. We will adjourn into closed session. We may be returning. We may not, though. This meeting is adjourned into closed session.